Thank you, and I'll second them. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved, and if I count correctly here...
Seven, right?
Seven items for tonight. I'm bored to death. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll move them also.
Okay, and I would second that. Any questions or comments about those?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, well then, all in favor, items one through seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we are officially done. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
We got this before council meeting. Maybe Garrett will be able to accomplish coming.
We're gonna have to dock his pay.
Okay.
Dave, where'd Dave go? Oh, Dave, was there anything that came out of your meeting today, you guys, about the mask wearing? Can we abolish ordinance, or how did it come out today? Or maybe Joan could talk good.
So, yeah, we did. We had, I think the phrase was a lively discussion amongst our unified command team. Because as you know, the state has dropped the minimum...
Dave?
Yeah.
You can't talk about that right now.
Oh, okay.
That would be a sunshine violation.
Oh, all right. All right.
Had a lot of downtown ask me what's going on. Couldn't answer them.
We have it on the agenda for the June meeting, June 2nd.
All right.
Are we gonna be back in the fire station then, or we can't talk about that either?
Looking on it. I'll put it that way. Mr. Ferrer?
We should probably wait.
Hi, Mr. Ferrer?
Garrett is in the building, in the room.
It's like a seance.
There he is.
Yay!
There he is.
Did you find out where to plug it in, eh, Garrett? Rest my case. I call the May 19th, 2021 council meeting to order with complete call roll.
Mr. Amerine?
Here.
Mr. Deleon?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
He's somewhere. He left again.
Somebody tell him we saw him?
He was. We'll think he's here.
Okay. Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Here.
Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
And Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Okay, we got opening remarks and the pledge from Mr. Amerine. Jack?
Um, no opening remarks, just stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And which one day under God indivisible...
All right, thank you. Jack, we need a motion for the minutes.
Jack, I would like to move the minutes from the April 21st meeting and the joint Franklin Township Committee meeting of May 5th.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuhar. Is there any discussion on it? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Okay, thank you. Is there anything under public communication?
No. Not under public comment. There's no one signed in.
All right. Would you go to the written communications, please?
Communication, an email from Council John Kuhar regarding parking for senior citizens. Seeing doctor Robert Smuts chiropractic practice received April 21st, 2021, and forwarded to council. Transfer liquor license request received April 26th from Kent Fuel and Mini Mart Incorporated, located at 1337 South Water Street. Transferring to 1337 Water Street Incorporated, located at the same address.
In a motion.
No objections to that.
In a motion.
With no objections. Second.
Second by Roger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Okay, Amy further?
Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for the May 4th, 2021 meeting was received on April 27th. An email from Rick Hoxley regarding the Westside Fire Station roof was received and forwarded to council on April 28th, 2021. An affidavit of petitioner's committee received regarding sensible marijuana ordinance received April 29th, 2021. And a copy was forwarded to council on May 3rd. A 20 annual report of the Kent Police Department was received and forwarded to council on May 3rd, 2021. A letter from Julie Kenworthy, Director of the Kent Historical Society regarding the trustees voting against an architectural change to the Westside Fire Station was received and forwarded to council May 3rd, 2021. Standing Rock Cemetery Board of Trustees minutes from April 8th and the agenda for May 13th meeting was received on May 4th, 2021. Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for May 18th was received on May 10th. The Board of Health Meeting Agenda and Statistical Report for May 11th, 2021, and the minutes from April 13th was received on May 11th, 2021. A notice from the Board of Elections concerning the new capability to electronically file resolutions of necessity, auditor certification, and resolutions to proceed received for the 11th and forwarded to council. And then, the communication that I received after the agenda was published, I received the Civil Service Commission Agenda for May 17th. Received that on May 14th, 2021. The Parks and Recreation Board Packet for May 20th was received on May 17th, 2021. The from Civil Service Commission for an Accreditation Coordinator was received on May 18th. And an email from Doug Fuller, Paula Treckle, Howard Boyle, and David Summers following up from the Westside Fire Station brief design discussion was received to May 19th and forwarded.
Okay, thank you. City Manager's Report, Mr. Amerine?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through 11 of the City Managers' Report.
Is there a second to that?
Second, man.
Second by Gwen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Is there further, Mr. Rohr?
No, thank you, Mayor. That's it tonight.
All right, thank you. State committees, committee hold, there's no action. Community Department, we do have some minutes. Mr. Kuhar?
Yes, I'd like to move the minutes of the May 1st, May 5th, 2021, and the one action. Or there's no actions.
There is no action. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gwen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Moving on, we do have... Excuse me. We have one draft. The court redraft number 2021-45 and title only.
Draft number 2021-045 and ordinance approving a request for community development block grant, CDVG assistance for fiscal year 2021 under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, including the program year 2021 Annual Action Plan and authorizing the execution and filing of the program year 2021 Annual Action Plan, including related certifications, and upon awarding of the grant, authorizing appropriation of funds and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Second by John. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-045 has passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving into health and public safety. There's no action, there's no minutes with the court redraft number 2021-46.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to that resolution.
Go ahead.
I would make amendment to strike section one. The terminology, local city health departments in general, and...
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that?
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what he's asking.
John, repeat your amendment.
In section one of the resolution, I would like to strike the words "local city health departments in general" and resolution specifically states Kent Department.
You want to make this specific into a general resolution?
Want to make it a specific resolution, not a general resolution.
It says local Kent City Health Department in the language.
That I have. I guess you're gonna have to second to hear why, and then you can vote on it either way you want.
I'm not seeing a second at this time.
I'll second it.
All right, Robin's seconded. Okay, John, you got further discussion?
Yeah, you know, I am all for the Kent City Health Department staying the way it is, and we have more than adequate justification of the city of Kent's health department being a good health department and functioning way beyond the means of most standard health departments. The thing that troubles me the most is that there are a lot of small cities that don't have what we have. They're under 50,000. They're not staffed to take care of their, the health needs like we are, and it would be a benefit for them to be part of the general health district of larger county.
Mr. Turner, you have something? You second the motion.
Yeah, I second the motion. I don't support his request. I seconded the motion to hear it. To hear what his meaning, his logic was. I don't, I'm not gonna support his request.
All right, Heidi, do you have further discussion?
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna support it either, because I think that if we're just asking for a Kent exception, that that's gonna create a very small likelihood of that. So I think that we should make it more of a general appeal and then let them come back and, you know, more clearly define the terms. Because I think that Kent would, we would fare worse if we struck that language.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, I'm sorry.
Go, Robin.
I would like to state that the people have voted on this before. If I'm following the logic, I don't have it in front of me. But if I'm following the logic, well, we had, have chosen specifically to have a, a health department in the city of Kent. I can't worry about what goes on on Aurora or Suffolk Hill, and I'm not going to get into a kind of situation like we did with the fire department. I'm, I'm comfortable with them coming back and us being specific about supporting the Kent Health Department. And I, I, I don't see the logic in us moving or changing that based on what the state is doing.
All right, Roger, you have your hand up?
Yes, the resolution that we're sending is, is due to a, a bill that's in, in the legislature, legislature. And 110, and 110, what we're doing is we're sending a resolution that we opposed 110. Because the outcome of 110, using the logic, and I understand what John is saying. I understand that, that the pandemic has exposed the weakness of our whole public health system across not only the state but across this country. But on the other side of the coin, what our resolution is, is our resolution is opposing logically House Bill 110. And so, that includes our surrounding communities. In other words, it's not just the city of Kent. If it was just the city of Kent that the bill was addressing, I'd agree with John 100%, but because it is, it, it's about all the communities in the, in the state of Ohio, I, I really believe that leaving it the way it is, actually, I'd even add House Bill 110 in it if I, if I have my druthers. But the reality is, is we have what we have, so I'm gonna oppose the motion at this point.
Hey, Jack, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I agree with Roger. I do have to say that this, this, this part of this bill is big government trying to swallow up the smaller municipalities, which is just wrong. So, I'm gonna support it.
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, I'll call, I'll call the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye. Close, same sign?
Aye.
Looks like the amendment died. So... Amy, we redraft number 2021-46 and title only.
Draft number 2021-046, a resolution by the Council of the City of Kent, Ohio, strongly opposing any effort by the state of Ohio to abolish the local Kent City Health Department, which has proven invaluable in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the entire city and surrounding communities during a time of global pandemic and declaring an emergency.
Who's suspension?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Second. All right, John, is there any discussion on adopting this? Heidi?
Yes. I think it is imperative that we very vociferously tell the state that they should not, in a sweeping move, abolish our health departments. They should take into account the kinds of communities that were serving the needs and the performance of the health department. I think that we would, if they did a needs-based and a performance-based assessment, we would come out with flying colors, especially based on what we have done during the pandemic, but also in other measures. So I think that this is, it appears to just be a directive that is going to have some very bad consequences. And we need to tell the state in no uncertain terms that this, that bad things will happen as a result of their bill, if it should pass.
Is there further discussion, Mr. Amerine?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. I would have to say that I've been serving on the Kent Health Board for 13 years. It is a top-quality health department. Joan Seidel is a top-quality health commissioner. And I have to say, this concerns me a great deal, because I'll tell you what. You start to merge us with another health department, and that other health department's going to be so overwhelmed with the amount of inspections. And it, and we're a college community, and we know how important it is. It would be foolish. It would just be foolish. So, I hope they get the message.
Anything else? John?
Yeah.
You know, and I agree 100%. And if I read the House bill correctly, the, the House bill gave you the availability to the state why you should not be included in merger. And my only thoughts were is not to slight our health department, but opportunity to other cities that might not have the facilities. But maybe I read, maybe I read the House bill wrong, because I, I don't know what the terminology was, but it said, you know, you could put yourself in a position of an exclusion from the House bill if it passed. But I'll still, I'll still vote with it.
Roger.
I think, I think Robin was trying to get in. Let him go first.
Okay, Robin.
Okay, thank you, Roger. I, to me, quite simply, this is a usurpation of the, of the right of a, of a city, self-ruled city to make its own determination. This is a settled issue with our voters. They chose to create an independent health board, and we've stuck with it. Now, we're just gonna go in and, and kind of overrule the people we represent. I, you know, and not only that, everybody's satisfied with what's going on. Our health department, as Jack said, is a top-notch health department. It's got excellent employees, tremendous leadership, and excellent board. And now, we're gonna get into a situation where we have to concern ourselves with what's going on in other communities. I've gone down that road before and supported that. I'm not gonna do that this. We have a responsibility to meet the desires of the people we represent. They want us to have independence in making our determinations as a city. And I'm gonna support that, and I, I hope that the rest of council does the same.
Hey, Roger.
Well, I, I realize that we're in a, we're not in a committee setting, but it would be wonderful at some point to hear from Joan as to what changes she would envision for our health department if this were to pass. Because I think she has insight as to what might happen, and I know we can't, we can't do that tonight because of our parliamentary procedures, but I would like to mention that I think this is only the first resolution. I think down the line, the next resolution that should come from not only our council, but from councils all over the state, is a resolution to demand that the state look at the deficiencies in county health departments, because John is exactly right. There are health departments, there are, there are, there are populations all over this state, as well as this country, that weren't served appropriately, because they didn't have the equipment. As a matter of fact, they're using obsolete equipment. We were using equipment in schools 25 years ago that they're still using in health departments today. That is, it's inadequate. It, it, it's all inadequate, because we didn't provide public funding. So I believe at some point, I think maybe we should step up as a, I'm gonna support this, because I think we should step up with another resolution somewhere down the line, where it demands that the House Legislature, the Legislature in Columbus really begin to address those shortfalls and begin to, you know, remodel and modernize all the health departments in, in the state of Ohio, especially those in the rural areas. So I support the motion.
Is there further discussion? All right, Amy, call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
And Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-046 has passed.
Okay, thank you. Just a comment. Some of you need to look at House Bill 110 and also write your appropriate letters where it should be written at. Just a suggestion. All right, that's it for health and public safety. Land use committee, there's no action, no minutes. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Sedoti?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the committee meeting minute, minutes be approved from May 5th, 2021, and the, the action that is recommended.
Second by John. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Thank you. With the court redraft number 2021-47 and title only.
Draft number 2021-047, an ordinance authorizing the sitting manager or his designate to enter into a license agreement between the city of Kent and The Tulips LLC to construct, maintain, and operate an outdoor patio at 211 Franklin Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
And Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Garrett. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
And Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
The ordinance 2021-047.
Okay, thank you. That's it for streets and sidewalks. Moving into Finance Committee, Mr. Deleon?
Yeah, I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes approved from May 5th, 2021, and the three actions recommended.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kuhar. Tracy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, can we make comments on the actions now or later?
I think it'd be appropriate now.
Okay. I just wanted to say, for the proposed project of the pitch roof, if we'd had time, I would have voted against that, because I think we could have come up with some solution to keep the integrity of the design and keep the, the roof from being such a burden for the firemen. But now it's too late, so.
Okay, any further, any further discussion? You all in favor of the, or the minutes and the recommendation signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you. With the court redraft number 2021-048 and title only.
Draft number 2021-048, an ordinance authorizing the trade-in, auction, disposal of vehicles, large equipment, and trailers, not needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second. Second by Mike. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? I see none, so please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
The ordinance 2021-048 has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the court redraft number 2021-49 and title only.
Draft number 2021-049, an ordinance amending ordinance 2021-004 to extend imposing a temporary moratorium on applicability of section 1191.13 of chapter 1191, titled Capital Improvement Fund Matching Amount as it pertains to the city's obligation to match developer fees paid into the Parks and Recreation Development Fund until August 30th, 2021 and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second. Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish?
Unveil yourself, Heidi.
Yes. Gotcha. I had a cat fight going on, I'm sorry.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. Deleon?
Yes.
Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes. Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this? Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amering.
Yes.
Mr. De Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh forty nine has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the court redraft number twenty twenty one dash fifty in title only.
Draft number twenty twenty one dash fifty, an ordinance accepting four donations and one grant totaling three thousand one hundred and forty dollars to the city of Kent for the Chimney Swift Project and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yeah.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amering.
Yes.
Mr. De Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes. Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance?
I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Gwen.
That's fine. I just wanted to see if if anyone hadn't had a chance to see the WKSU story about the Chimney Swift Project. It really is something very special. Jim and Rhonda in engineering have done a tremendous job on this. I know it seems like a really small thing, but protecting a species, no matter how small, is very important. I think it's really important to the residents of the city, too. So I'm really excited to see that that we had some donations and received the grant money as well. So hopefully we can see some more of these towers popping up.
There further? Mr. Sedoti, you went up. All right, call it. Call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Schaefer-Bish.
She go.
Did we lose her?
Yep.
Disappeared. Go ahead.
Oh, no. Um.
She'll go like this. Yes.
And spell see her.
Mr. Turner.
Yeah.
Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amering.
Yes.
Mr. De Leon.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero five zero has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for finance committee. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Mr. Kuhar.
Couple of things. This past month, members of Animal Control approached me about a problem they were having regarding feral cats. And prior to bringing it to council, I talked to Chief Sheer and he said he would like to put something together to bring to council to discuss this issue. So I'm asking for a motion to do that.
You want to put it in the committee?
Correct.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Okay, is there further discussion, Mr. Kuhar?
Not really. I I I think one of the animal control percent what they were, they're talking about to for possible solution and decisions based on that.
Okay, Mr. Turner, further discussion?
No.
Mr. De Leon, you have your hand up?
Yes. You're not going to try and put them on leashes, are you, John?
I'm not going to try to do anything. Are you talking about the animal control or the feral cats?
Yeah, the feral cats. We've been down that road, remember?
Few times.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti, you had your hand up?
Well, I was just going to mention, I think it was two years ago or two summers ago where we had the catch and release people who actually came to us about the feral cats. And so that might be a good time to revisit it again if it's a problem.
You know, this is a different plan, but I don't think it's talk about it.
All right, Tracy, you have your hand up?
Yeah, if we're going to have this discussion again, I think that we should notify the catch and release people so that they can be in attendance also with the discussion when it happens.
All right, we'll get the advertisement out and consequently you make sure they hear about it. Is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Looks like that passes.
Then I have one item.
I'm asking, John, go ahead.
Okay, um. Like, my question is, have we stopped the fire ban in Kent, the order that we had for fires or is that still continuing?
I don't quite understand what you're asking, John.
Okay, we had a fire ban because of the pandemic that we weren't allowed to have outdoor fires.
I don't remember that.
I don't either. We're not allowed to have bonfires, period. It's an ordinance.
I think you can have fifty foot away from your house.
Yeah, this was outdoor fires and when the pandemic started, we made the 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 fire department said that to protect people that wanted to have their windows open for fresh air, that we weren't allowed to have any open burns outside.
Because of the epidemic? Because of the epidemic?
Because of the pandemic.
A pandemic, all right. I don't remember that, but I'm not saying it didn't happen.
Well, anyhow, I remember, but you know, the reason I bring that up was just about three weeks ago or so. The people in my neighborhood, all their houses filled up with smoke. It was very distasteful. I called the Kent Police Department to see if they knew what was going on or if Kent State had any open burns. And they didn't know anything about it. Twenty minutes later, the dispatcher called me back and said, yeah, they were closing the roads and they had an open burn. And I just felt, you know, if we weren't even allowed to have burns, why did we have that? And why didn't they have the courtesy to notify people so you wouldn't be sleeping with your window open and have your house smell like charcoal?
John, can I ask you a question? Are you, do you want a answer back from staff or do you want to put this in committee?
Well, I don't know. I just think, first of all, we need to know if we're allowed to burn stuff. And second of all, you know, you know, I I think they they're obligated, they they should notify people if they're going to smoke a whole neighborhood out.
Who?
So I don't know who's in charge of that.
Who is they? I who who was doing the burning?
Kent State.
Were they, were they burning down?
Grass. By the rec center, by the rec center.
Well, they do that every year. They should probably.
Well, yeah, they notify.
Yeah.
They notify you and the whole, our whole neighborhood was gray. Looked like you're in the middle of a civil war.
Is this a once a ti, a once a year maintenance thing or what?
Yeah.
Normally it is. Normally they notify people and you you're not alarmed by having your neighborhood turn gray and you don't have your windows open so your houses don't fill up with smoke. Nothing was done. And then I, you know, you you would assume if if you're not allowed to have an open burn about it, too.
Um, could Mayor?
Go ahead, Robin. I got your light on.
Okay, uh, well, what John, I think is asking first off is if there's a mandate from the state to the city and the community. Huh?
This was the city's mandate.
No, I said it is the city's mandate and not the mandate of the state because if it's regarding the the open burn, I thought that that would probably be more of an issue that would have emanated from the from the state if it regarding the the pandemic. And then the 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 city would be, the city would have information on exactly how they're authorized to oversee that. But anyway, you need the information and know one way or the other. In fact, that is the case that the that the state has mandated no open burning and the city is enforcing it. Or if the city's mandating, I don't know if the city be doing that based on the pandemic, but oh, okay. But anyway, we do, we need to know what, we need to get, we need to get an understanding of who's has the authority to apply, uh, you know, to apply whatever, you know, guidance that we need to have in order to ensure that this is enforced or not enforced or whatever.
I think Chief Tosco's here in the meeting.
Yeah, and that would be a good way to go. Talk to the fire chief.
Uh, his light's on, but I don't know whether he's here. I guess he is.
There he is.
John, do you want to have a comment on this?
If I, if I may, I I can't, that specific instance, there are two, two different things going on here. The the burning of the grass at the rec center. You're right, it is a yearly maintenance issue. And they pull a permit through the aggregate quality control. I signed it and then we have people, a couple of our firefighters standing by just in case the fire gets out of control. But you're right, KSU probably should have done a better job of public service announcement on that one. There was, there was quite a bit of grass this year because we weren't able to burn last year. So they they burn all that off so the fresh grass can grow up. And as far as the open burning issue, the ban on rec fires, I believe we discussed that in our excellent command last spring. And I don't believe we've discussed it since then to either to keep it going or to eliminate that ban. So that is something I think we could probably look at for for the staff.
Thank you.
John, you want to go further with this?
Yeah, I got.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else have anything on their new business? Seeing nothing, councilmen, council people, council persons comment? Mr. Ferrara.
Uh, first, I'd like my, I was able last week to attend the police training situational training they did over in Talmadge and it was interesting to say the least, and I think gave me a greater appreciation for the decisions they have to make and how fast they have to make them. And, you know, I I think highly of our police force as it is, but just seeing that one day's worth of training heightened that awareness and respect that they have. And I would urge anyone that has a chance to do it. I was there for maybe three hours, but I think after one hour you could fit it in your day. It'd be well worth it to see what situations they go through. So that was very very, very impressive to say the least. My second comment is, is I think tonight with all our technological jinxes, mine included tonight, it just highlights the fact that we need to get our meetings back in person. And I would urge council to urge the administration or council itself to decide if we want to meet in person and figure out how we should go about doing that and putting it in a safe environment. But it's inefficient, it's ineffective, and it's cumbersome. And I think we're doing a disservice to our jobs, which I know we're all passionate about doing the best we can. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, we're we're working on that. We're talking about it now. Once again, we're not like every city. We do not have a city hall. It's a little complex with us. It's different. Your first comment on the police. That on that, I know some of you have done this, but they are going to do a community policing academy this fall. If you haven't done it, you got to do it. And it's only going to amplify what Garrett said, what our people do. So there any more comments?
Heidi.
Heidi.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to apologize for disappearing. And I also want to go down on record for supporting the Chimney Swift ordinance. The rec, the receiving the the gifts or grants. So if you would do that for me, Amy, I appreciate it. Thank you. I I just ran out of power.
Anybody else? Moving the Mary's report. This last week, we celebrated Ohio Goes Blue at Police Week. Just amplify again what Mr. Ferrara said and what I said about the police academy. It was a a week and a half of celebration to give respect to those people that have lost their life. In your regards to them out there for your safety and also the ones that are out there today and God bless them and I hope they all go home to their families to tend to their kids. That's all I have. And if nobody has anything else, Richard. Good night.